This evening, to our Waterloo City Council meeting this November 2nd today. Madam Clerk, could you please read the roll?
Mr. Bowzen?
Here.
Mr. Amos?
Here.
Mr. Morrissey?
Here.
Mrs. Klein?
Here.
Mr. Foyce?
Here.
Mr. Greider?
Here.
And Mrs. Duen?
Here.
If you would please join me in a moment of silence. All right, thank you. The pledge this evening. Our three firefighters, if you would stand right in front, I want you guys to lead us in the pledge. So the only thing you have to do is start out and say, "I pledge allegiance," and then continue there, and we'll follow along. If you want to, if you would please stand. Stand right there is our special guest this evening, and then just ask us, would you all join us in the pledge? Not too tough, huh? Give us one second, we'll call you right back up here, so.
Motion to approve the agenda as presented in the minutes of the October 26, 2020, regular session.
Second.
A motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we have an agenda in minutes. First item on the agenda is a proclamation declaring November 2020 as Lung Cancer Awareness Month. Whereas lung cancer is the leading cause of cancer death among men and women in the United States and in Waterloo in 2020, accounting for more death than colon cancer, breast cancer, and prostate cancer combined. And whereas, according to the Center for Disease Control and Prevention, there were 530 new lung cancer cases and 355 deaths because of lung cancer between 2013 and 17 in Blackhawk County. Whereas, the five-year survival rate for localized lung cancer is 59%, yet only 17% of lung cancers are diagnosed at this stage. Whereas, screening for lung cancer for high-risk individuals using low-dose computed tomography can lead to the earlier detection of lung cancer and save lives, reducing the mortality by 20% when compared to screening by chest x-ray in the National Lung Screening Trial III, and reducing the risk of death at 10 years by 24% in men and 33% in women, as demonstrated by another large randomized trial. Whereas, funding for lung cancer research trials trails far behind funding for research of many other cancers. An additional research is needed in early diagnosis, screening, and treatment for lung cancer, as well as in lung cancer affecting women and lung cancer health disparities. And whereas, women diagnosed with lung cancer are more likely to be younger and never smokers, lung cancer incidence and mortality rates in women are rising relative to men. More women die from lung cancer than breast cancer every year, and by 2035, it is expected that more women will die from lung cancer than men. And whereas, organizations working in the Waterloo community, such as the American Lung Cancer Screening Initiative and Women's Lung Cancer Forum, are committed to educating about lung cancer and lung cancer screening and working to increase lung cancer screening rates in Waterloo. I therefore, Quinton Hart, do hereby proclaim November 2020 as Lung Cancer Awareness Month. And as I was reading, I looked down, is John Sillit here? John, are you here in the audience? Are you online? All right, it says "present," and I almost forgot. So very important proclamation that impacts so many community members, not just in Waterloo, but across this country. So thank you so much, John, and thank all of the advocacy and efforts from the American Lung Cancer Screening Initiative and the Women's Lung Cancer Forum. So thank you so much. Next up, we have a swearing-in firefighter. So Chief Treelord, if you would join me. If you would please join me as well.
Thanks.
Very good, thanks, Mayor. So it's always an exciting time for Waterloo Fire when we welcome new members into our family, and these three individuals, we're confident with their skill set and their certifications, are going to contribute to our organization from day one and provide excellent patient care to our citizens that we're charged with taking care of. So I'll just do a quick introduction of them before you swear them in. Immediately to my left is Zach Benson. Zach was born in Waterloo, graduated from Columbus High School. After high school, joined the Marines, served four years with the Marines, was deployed twice to Afghanistan. After being honorably discharged, came back to Waterloo, attended Hawkeye Community College, where he got his paramedic certification. And previous to joining us, he worked with Care Ambulance here in Waterloo. He likes to hit the gym and hang out with some friends, Mayor. So welcome, Zach. Next, I'd like to introduce Hillary Meyer. Hillary's got some fans, that's good. So Hillary grew up in Waverly, and after high school, obtained her firefighter one and her paramedic certification. For the past two years, Hillary's worked as a paramedic in Waverly. Her father was also a firefighter and paramedic. Hillary has three children, ages 10, 8, and 3. So if she's not busy enough with taking care of family and starting a new career, she's finishing up a degree at UNI as well. So welcome, Hillary. Glad to have you onboard. Last but not least is Bo Godnier. Bo was born and raised in north Des Moines, north side of Des Moines. He worked for Unit Point Health, as well as Windsor Heights Fire Department, before relocating to northeast Iowa. In 2014, Bo attended Hawkeye Community College, graduated with paramedic certification, worked as a paramedic and volunteered for the past six, seven, eight years in the EMS field. Bo and his fiance have three children, two daughters and a son. Bo is an avid collector of vinyl records, Mayor, so if you're in need of a vinyl record, Bo is your guy. So you know who they are. So Bo likes to fish and hunt with his children, and we're pleased to have you onboard as well, Bo. So I'll turn it over to you, Mayor.
All right, so when I say "I," state your name, your name. Don't say "state your name," your name, and then after that, repeat after me. So "I," wait, hold up your right hand. "I" Do solemnly swear. I will support the Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of Iowa. I will faithfully and impartially to the best of my ability discharge all the duties of the position of firefighter in the city of Waterloo, Blackhawk County, Iowa, as now or hereafter required by law. Congratulations. All right. All right, so if you want to know how to clear a room, don't we?
Mm-hmm. I want to stay put.
That's pretty cool, she's got three kids. Thank you. Those kids got to be proud of their mom. That's pretty cool. All right, thank you. It is now time for oral presentations. Your opportunity to address the City Council on non-agenda-related items. State your name and address for the podium, and let us know what's on your thoughts.
Forest Delaveux, 1725 Honeyton Road. I would like to speak to something that happened last week. You rezoned some property for Unity Point to develop. This property, prior to rezoning, was halfway done. The back of the building was opened up to put in a new door or a dock door. Walls were installed and everything, and I think things like this that require rezoning should be done prior to building permits being issued. Somebody, I believe, is dropping the ball. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And I think we were asked that question, similar question as well.
I did in an email, sir, and got a satisfactory answer from Noel.
All right. Noel, any comments on that?
Noel Anderson, Community Planning and Development Director. So one thing to note is that this is not a rezoning, it's a site plan amendment to an S1 district. So it is a permitted use, so they definitely had the ability to go in there as a permitted use and start some of the work. Obviously, if the site plan amendment portion was not approved by the council, they would have had to change those plans in terms of the amount of patron use, because the main thing they're examining in the site plan amendment for this site, being a multi-use tenant strip mall-type building, was the review of the parking, which the council did approve, so they're able to go ahead with their plans. We're happy to have Unity Point going in there, but they went ahead and started with some of the demolition work, which does, some of that does not require a permit, but the improvements definitely would. But again, they had some options depending upon how the approval process went.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Delaveux. All right, council.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Greider.
Yes, so last week, when we had a council meeting, countywide positivity rates stood at 10.5%, and our deaths for the county stood at 98. Today, our county positivity rates stand at 18.6%, and over the last week, we have unfortunately added five more to the total death toll for COVID-19 for Blackhawk County, in addition to over 1,000 cases in seven days. I know we're tired. I know we are. I wear a mask all day at work, and I know we're tired of it, but COVID-19's not tired of us. We need to dig deep as we enter these cold seasons with the flu and being forced more indoors because of weather, because if we don't, worse things will happen. And so we need to wear a mask, we need to maintain our social distance, we need to wash our hands, and we need to be vigilant as we wait for a vaccine and other therapeutics to come online.
All right, thank you. Counsel?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yeah, a few things. First of all, as a follow-up to Jonathan's or Councilman Greider's statement, I would hope that we're looking at redoing, not redoing, but re-upping the mask resolution. We're probably into our fourth or fifth week on that, because I know it was only for six weeks, if my recollection's correct. So I hope that that is on the agenda for the next, sometime in the next couple of weeks. Another thing that gets brought up to me is downtown parking issue and the meters and that, and I hope that, as we discussed in the past, that that is on an agenda for a work session for further discussion and further proposals or ideas about what to do with the downtown parking. Next is that we have two council people who are liaisons with the Police Insignia Committee, non-voting. But I just, I believe that one of their things was to give an update on that, and it would be good to have an update on that at this point. And then the last thing is the telecommunications board met on the 28th of October, and I see that they had an executive closed session as part of that. But I'm just wondering if you or whoever could discuss where we're at with that as far as it doesn't break those executive session rules.
All right, just really quickly, so there is not a finalized plan yet for the telecommunications board. I think everything is in draft order, so the plan is not 100% completed. The mask resolution, Kelly, you want to give an update on that?
Sure. The last mask resolution that the council passed was signed by the mayor on September 28th, so as to not overlap with the previous six weeks from the first resolution that was passed. So that will be coming to council again on the 9th, and then we would have mayor sign that on the 10th so that it takes effect and we're not overlapping on our six weeks with those mask mandate resolutions.
And with regards to parking, I just had a meeting with Jessica, Michelle Wheatner, and Jerry as well, about another option that we're working on to offer to downtown residents, and that'll be coming, downtown businesses, and that'll be coming forth here, hopefully within the next two weeks. So you'll be getting something on that. And our liaisons, I don't know if you want to give an update, or you'd rather have, it's up to you, you or Miss Duen.
I can give you an update, sir. Our first meeting was a month ago, and it was more of an introductory meeting, and we discussed what the Griffin means to us, what our community relations with the police department means. And everyone had input. It was a good meeting. We're meeting once a month, except for the month of December, to iron out these issues. Our next meeting is November 4th, from 3:00 to 4:00 o'clock. It'll be on Zoom, so people can tune into that if they'd like to. The topic's a discussion. We're going to talk about rebranding committee, what they want to request incorporation, any particular verbiage, and call for public submissions, because we're going to ask for public submissions. That's a 20-minute discussion. Color scheme is a 20-minute discussion. Then we're going to review on this meeting current insignia inventory, cost estimates for replacement. And then we're going to talk about the public submission and who they submitted to, and asking for the designs to be submitted by December 26. And then at our January meeting, which will be January 13th, we're going to score each design and then discuss recommendations regarding the scope and timeline of the rebranding.
Right.
And I think Major Leibold is sitting in. He's one of the committee chairs, if I missed something.
Anything to add, Major?
Yeah, a little computer problem. Yeah, no, Dave pretty much covered it all. We're just going to kind of take it piece by piece and work our way through it, and hopefully have at least a cost analysis done by February, and then a final solution by July.
All right, thank you. Counsel, anything else?
Mr. Mayor? Yeah, I just want to clarify, I think Mr. Delaveux and Noel both mentioned that that site amendment was for Unity Point, I think it was Mercy One.
Oh, good one, good catch. Oh, good catch, thank you. And just a reminder to get people out to vote to tomorrow as well. So other than that, we're ready to move on, ma'am.
Okay. Motion to close the oral presentations, receive comments, and place on file.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Oral presentation's closed.
Motion to approve the consent agenda with the addition in 1A1 of the bill's payment in the amount of $995,171.92. Move to receive, approve, and place on file.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Counsel? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Bowzen?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
And Mrs. Duen?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Appointment Denise Dermati, ADA Compliance Commission, it's a reappointment, so I want to thank her for re-upping and continuing to serve on that commission. Could someone take number two?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Morrissey.
Like to make a motion, hold on. Like to make a motion to receive and file proof of publication, notes of public hearing, on the fiscal year 2021 Leisure Services Chemical Building Apron Paving Project Contract Number 1039.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The hearing is now open. Is there anyone that would like to speak to a chemical storage, chemical building apron? Going a second time?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Like to make a motion to close the hearing.
Motion's been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The hearing is now closed.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Like to make a motion to adopt a resolution confirming approval of plan specifications, form of contract, et cetera, and all
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Mrs. Duen?
Yes.
And Mr. Bowzen?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Like to make a motion, receive, file, instruct city clerk to read bids and refer to the city engineer for review.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, Madam Clerk?
Our first bidder was B&amp;B Builders and Supply of Waterloo, Iowa. They provided 5% security. Their base bid was $36,390. The alternate was $33,332, for a total of $69,722. Second bidder was Minturn Incorporated of Brooklyn, Iowa. They provided 5% security. Their base bid was $71,750, alternate $61,900, total bid $133,730. Third bidder was Vith Construction Corporation of Cedar Falls, Iowa. They provided 5% security. Their base bid was $58,720, alternate $40,428, for a total of $99,148. Our next bidder was Tricon Construction Group of Dubuque, Iowa. They provided 5% security. Their base bid amount was $73,953, alternate $49,172, for a total of $123,125. Final bidder was Lodge Construction Incorporated of Clarksville, Iowa. They provided 5% security. Their base bid was $50,600. Their alternate bid was $42,280. Their total bid was $92,880.
All right, thank you. Who was the bid estimate on that? I missed that.
I do not have a bid estimate.
Okay, all right. All right, thank you. Could someone take three, four, and five?
Mr. Mayor.
Mrs. Klein.
Number three is a resolution approving supplemental agreement number four to the Professional Services Agreement with H.R. Green, Inc. of Cedar Rapids, Iowa, originally executed April 6th, 2020, in an amount not to exceed $19,380 in conjunction with the fiscal year 2021 Shawless Road Reconstruction Hess Road to Highway 218 project, contract number 1020, and authorizing the mayor to execute said document. Number four is a resolution approving a contract agreement with Modern Design of Janesville, Iowa, in conjunction with the City Hall Second Floor Counter and Security Renovations and Construction Design Project in the amount of $54,200, and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said document. And finally, number five is a resolution approving a permanent easement agreement and temporary easement agreement with Lonnie Wolf Jr. in the amount of $300 to allow for the construction and future maintenance of a sanitary sewer located on a vacant parcel southeasterly of 2848 Lafayette Street, and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute necessary documents.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Is there anyone here that would like to speak to these three items on the agenda? Counsel?
I have a few questions, sir.
Mr. Bowzen.
Thank you. I just have a question on number three and a question on number four. And on number three, on the lighting design, in, on April 6th, when we approved the contract with H.R. Green, in that contract itself, they, under client responsibilities, they required the city to provide roadway lighting, equipment preferences, and record drawings of existing lighting and electrical connections. So my question is, is why wasn't this, the lighting design included in the original contract with H.R. Green? Since they've already asked for that information in the original specs.
All right, Jamie?
Jamie Knutson, City Engineer. That was for existing lighting and signal work down at 218 in Shawless for down there. This is, this amendment is specifically for lighting and some landscaping at the roundabout itself.
Thank you. And my next question would be on number four, and it appears we're hardening up and putting windows and doors in for security on the second floor. Are we planning on doing that throughout the entire City Hall? I know the police department is hardening up the front counter. What do we have in long-range plans to harden up the clerk's office?
Noel, do you have that?
Noel Anderson, Community Planning and Development Director. We've been kind of looking at it in pieces as we can to see what the costs would be associated with some of those. We kind of started with the area that's on the agenda tonight for one of them. It only has one exit in and out, so that was one of the major ones we wanted to look at first, just in terms of talking with the police department for emergency situations. So we will be moving ahead with other sections of City Hall and other buildings as we progress down this road.
This is the first one?
That is correct.
And my only request would be that, as we look down the road, that the next one we look at is the clerk's office. Yeah, and my, my only request would be that if, as we look down the road, that the, that the next one we look at is the clerk's office.
That would make some sense since we're starting up here and then just going down there, that hopefully we'll still be able to utilize a lot of the same procedures and stuff.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Other questions, counsel? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Mrs. Juin?
Yes.
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
And Mr. Amos?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Six, seven, and eight.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Bozen.
Thank you. I'd like to adopt a resolution, uh, approving First Amendment to owner's statement and deed of dedication for Audubon Hills First Edition, and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said documents. Number seven is adopting a resolution authorizing salvage by Forsar Delarue for, of an overhead garage door on property owned by the city of Waterloo, located at nine fifteen Linden Avenue, and accepting indemnity agreement. And number eight is adopting a resolution concurring with the determination of the city planner that's proposed change to the approved site plan within a CP Plan Commercial District for the new grocery store to add a two thousand, five hundred fifty-eight square foot to the building for a separate business, and change the location of part of the parking spaces located at Two Twenty-One to Two Twenty-Five Franklin Street is a, is, is minor and shall be approved as a minor site plan amendment.
Second.
All right, that motion's been made with the second. Is there anyone in the audience, uh, with questions? Counsel, any questions?
I just had one more.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Amos?
Yeah, I was just wondering. I, I see, I, I looked at the plans and it looks like there's another building that's going up. Any idea what that is?
Uh, you're talking about number eight? Or which number? All right.
Number eight.
Noel?
Noel Anderson, Community Planning Development Director. Yeah, they have added a, uh, I believe it's a bank, um, that they are partnering with. Um, I'm trying to double-check that. Um, that they've, they've added another tenant onto the, onto the, the, the area there. Um, so we went back and double-checked the parking requirements, all that, and the layout, um, and it was a minor change from what was previously approved.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and, and I, I was, I watched Mr. Anderson on one of his live things on Facebook, and they were talking about a laundromat, so I don't know if the laundromat's in the store, if this is, that portion of it or not. I'm not sure, but my question for, for Noel was, was why we were bringing this ahead of the, uh, amendment to the development agreement that expired in August? Because we've been out of that agreement since the end of August, since the construction hasn't started.
And Noel Anderson, and we have, um, received some foundation permit, um, so we're looking at those for the, the new plans as they laid out, so we're excited that they're hopefully moving ahead toward construction. Um, we did, uh, draft an amendment for them to look at, um, to change the dates, essentially to coincide with their construction timeline. This zoning approval is, is, is a little bit separate from the, the development agreement. We would have liked to have had them both on tonight. We just hadn't received a signed amendment back or anything, um, in, in its final form, so we're hopefully getting that back this upcoming Monday or the one after. Um, but we wanted to move ahead with the zoning in case they, they would wanna start doing some, uh, earth-moving preparation, um, at their own decision.
Noel, can I, just one more question, Noel. I mean, we, it's, it's, you know, it's three years and three months. We're, what, I, I just want to know when we're gonna start this project, because it's, it's consistently, it's been delayed. When, in, in March, March ninth, when we had a meeting, uh, and, and Mr. Anderson said that we were gonna start in May, and then it was June, and then it was July, and then it was, then we got a, a, a email from him saying that it was gonna be around the first of September, pass the development agreement. And then I saw him on North End Update, and he said it was gonna be the end of November. I, I would just, just like some information on if this is gonna get started this year, and, and when is it gonna get started?
Yeah, I think we're all excited to try and get, see it get started, and again, with the foundation permit, uh, information being submitted, hopefully it's very close, and, and perhaps that's where they're, they're trying to figure out exactly what date they wanna put on that amendment. Um, obviously, we left that line blank with what they wanna put on there, so we can all have, be on the same page for when it's gonna start.
Noel, when you say a foundation permit, for people in the audience, what does that mean?
So, when you're working on a larger building, you can take out portions of the permits in stages, so let's say you have your foundation, uh, all your foundation design ready to go. You can go ahead and get started with that. At this time of year, you see a lot of foundation permits going out, 'cause people wanna get into the dirt, get into the earth before we have any freezing ground or, or a lot of snow cover. Um, so they'll get in there and start doing that work while it may be, their architect may still be finalizing other aspects of the HVA system for the main building or something like that. Um, they may have it all ready too, and just take it out in stages. It's, it's pretty common for us to see it, to take it out in different stages of the, the foundation than the main building, than maybe some of the other smaller items.
All right, counsel? Madam Clerk?
Mrs. Klein?
I, I'm gonna say yes on six and seven, and frankly, I agree with my colleague on number eight, so I'm gonna have to say no on number eight.
Thank you.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Mrs. Juin?
Yes.
Mr. Bozen?
Yes, on six and seven, no on eight.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
And Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Number nine?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Go ahead, Councilman. Okay, sorry, I just wanted, uh, I'd like to make a motion to receive, file, consider it passed for the first time in ordinance, admitting the city of Waterloo code of ordinances by striking subsections D, E, and F of Section One, mandatory connection required of Chapter Two Water Regulations of Title Eight Public Utilities, and enacting in lieu thereof new subsections D, E, and F of Section One, mandatory connection required of Chapter Two Water Regulations of Title Eight Public Utilities.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Um, questions, conversation about this item? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Mrs. Juin?
Yes.
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
And Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules. Second.
The motion has been made with the second. Ms. Felkley?
Um. I would maybe defer to Chad. Um, if they do have some assessments that they're, um, some bills that they're ready to assess, it would be good to move forward with it, but if they don't have any, that'll be coming up in the next couple of weeks, and I think we could wait, but I'll defer to, um, Chad. I believe he's on the line.
I am, and at this point in time, we do not have any, uh, bills that we are looking to assess. We, we still have some service line repairs, uh, similar to what were on the agenda earlier tonight, but as far as bills, nothing pending at this time.
Okay, so I think we, we'd be okay to wait if you, if council wants to.
Who's the liaison?
Mr. Mayor?
I am.
Yes, uh, Mr. Mr. Morrissey, do you know?
Yeah, the, the only question I have is, has there been any opposition, uh, to this, uh, change, either in writing, or in calls, or in any emails?
There's been no opposition to the change.
Thank you.
All right. Mr. Bozen, any comment? Is there people upset about this? Is anyone, or is it just a simple?
No, sir, and I'm, I'm the waterworks liaison, and so is Councilman Juin, and we, we covered all this in the work session. And it, it's, it seems to me, it's a very simple thing. They're just gonna take over doing the job that the city clerk used to do, because it's their department and they're the ones that deal with it on a regular basis. I have no problem moving ahead three readings tonight. I mean, it's, 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 it's not gonna affect anything. The, the assessments are still going out. It's just by someone else.
Madam Clerk?
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Mrs. Juin?
Yes.
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
And Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to receive, file, consider it passed for the second and third times, and adopt said ordinance. Thank you.
That motion has been made with the second. Madam Clerk?
Mrs. Juin?
Yes.
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
And Mr. Greider?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Second.
Motion's been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We adjourned. Thank you, counsel.